So I think he had something else he had to do today. Okay, I'll wait for you to. You ready? Okay. Welcome, everybody.
Hello.
Welcome.
We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is public comment, so. Anybody that wants to address the board, feel free to come on up and address the board.
Where you want me?
I don't care. The camera ain't on, it doesn't really matter. You can have a chair, whatever you wanna do.
Is now joining.
Alright, um, Nick Ryan, eighteen fifty-one, two hundred and sixtieth street, Oskaloosa. First, uh, I just wanna read some remarks from one of the side A landowners, uh, Jack Rempe. This is from Jack. I feel the DOT should not grant annexation to the city of Oskaloosa. The current infrastructure that needs addressed now are road repair and sewer, not new projects. Uh, no new projects should be added at this time. How many businesses are looking to move here? With currently not enough people to fill the jobs we have now, I don't see that happening. Uh, the fact that two twenty is street, a farm and market road can be closed without major safety concerns, puts more stress on an already crowded one sixty-three. By now you know, the city of Oskaloosa voters get it. They voted this project down, current supervisors get it, they're out. The Iowa Supreme Court gets it. Uh, they understand this is strictly a want and not a need. Uh, Dave Swenson, ISU economist, gets it. He says there's no need for an airport now in this region. I just don't understand why Oskaloosa and Pella cannot get it. They both have airports that service their needs with Atoma, Grinnell, Newton, Knoxville, and Des Moines in close proximity if the need is there for a bigger airport. The DOT knows land use is very important. This six hundred plus acres has supported many families, some for over a hundred ten plus years. Taxes have been paid, hundreds of thousands of dollars generated to feed and fuel the county, state, and nation. With that comes the promise of a new beginning. Another year with another growing season to provide for a hungry world. That will not happen with the airport. Uh, if the DOT wants to help Oskaloosa, they would put a new bypass on the east side, pick up traffic on highway ninety-two and take trucks off South Fifteenth Street. Their current bypass location has not been cited for the best use for truck, truck traffic through Oskaloosa, only to cater to the proposed airport site. The Supreme Court has spoken, this needs to go away. Explain to my four-year-old grandson why he cannot farm his family's century farm someday. Uh, I'll leave it with this, and that's the end of Jack's comments. My comments are, right now the city of Oskaloosa is looking at annexing land that they purchased through an agreement that the Supreme Court ruled never should have been in place, uh, to begin with. Um, I don't think that we should even be considering allowing the city to annex land that they shouldn't have bought in the first place. Um, the, you know, the whole point of our government is that it represents the will of the people. That's been made abundantly clear to everybody, to everybody, uh, and to the extent to which the Board of Supervisors can prevent this from moving forward, that's what you need to do. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna speak?
Howard Westercamp, seventeen sixty-nine, highway one sixty-three, Oskaloosa, Iowa. I'd like to echo Jack Rempe's statements. Jack's a neighbor. We both live on the wrong side of the road. I'm out there, I'm looking forward to being in the city of Oskaloosa, where I'll have absolutely no say in what goes on. I'll get no benefits, but I will get the taxes. And that pretty much sums up the way I feel about it. They should have never bought land out there to begin with. The Supreme Court raised their eyebrows when they heard that they already had land bought. And, uh, the city was out of order. Plain and simple, I don't think we need to have a eighty-twenty agreement. I don't think we need to have any agreement with the city because they're not honorable people. That's it.
Thanks, Howard. Anybody else? If none, moving ahead. I guess I don't, the next thing on the agenda is the eighty-twenty annex petition?
I guess I don't know what that is.
Uh, just to get some clarity, clarity on the eighty-twenty, has nothing to do with the county. That's a state law. And if you have eighty, if you acquire by normal consent eighty percent of the property, then they can do whatever means that they term necessary to get the other twenty percent. And they don't wanna get into condemnation or twenty-eighty agreements and that type of thing. They want to negotiate with people fairly. That's the eighty-twenty rule. So as far as an agreement between us and the city, it has nothing to do with that. Go ahead, Nick.
So I, I guess I still, I'm for clarity. What exactly is the eighty-twenty annexation petition? Because petition is a pretty specific word. So I guess my question is, what exactly is it you two are gonna be voting on here momentarily?
Well.
Do you have a, do you have a doc? Is there, is there the actual petition?
No, this is just a letter. I know nothing about a petition, I guess. It's just a letter.
Of support, uh, of support to the city. Basically, we're caught between a rock and a hard spot. There's not a thing we can do legally.
But you could potentially right now vote no on whatever that is?
We could, but we need to understand that, that that's gonna be a no-win situation for us. We probably will lose the twenty-eighty, the southeast connector, the DOT relationship with that, the bypass on the twenty, so we lose, we stand to lose an awful lot of ground with the DOT relationship if we did that.
So are we being extorted by the DOT? Are we being threatened to lose other viable projects if we don't go along with this, with this one?
We're not threatened.
Seems like it. That's, that's literally what you just said, is if we don't go along with this, they might yank all these other things. That sounds to me like somebody's being leveraged.
So how much gamble do you wanna take with the county?
I want the county supervisors to represent the will of the rural, of the residents of the Haskett County.
Trying to get it to where they understand what's going on.
I think who's been going on for fifteen years, everybody understands pretty clearly what's going on. And that is the city is making a move against the rural residents and trying to force their will down other people's throats. We wanna stand up against it, we want you to stand up against it.
At all costs.
Absolutely. We've done, we've done it up to this point to the tune of millions of dollars and every red cent was worth it. We're, 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 we're fighting for the basic foundations of what it means to live in the republic that we live in. This, we're, we're fighting for basic fundamentals of democracy here. We all know that this is being powered by corporate interests, and meanwhile, everybody else is getting left in the dust. You said it, Mr. Wonders, a long time ago, we're tired of being owned. This is another step in us being owned further, and if it's all the same to you as our representatives, we'd prefer you put your foot down.
I agree.
Then on top of that, if they're gonna annex to a certain point, what's to say that they're gonna annex even more? In, into the rural development area?
They can, I don't think.
That's all possible.
You wanna touch on this, Andy, Andrew, what?
Yeah.
Uh, certainly, so it's, it's my understanding at this point that the proposed annexation would run on one sixty-three, which is controlled right now by the DOT. The DOT, uh, can request to the city, uh, a voluntary annexation on that right-of-way, which would run up, uh, really up to the lightening area on one sixty-three. Ultimately, um, because of the configuration of the roadway of one sixty-three, it falls within the definition of what's called an urbanized area. An urbanized area is one that's within the two-mile, uh, extended boundary of a city limit other than the city annexing. So in this case, uh, the city of Beacon actually has, within its two-mile extended boundary, part of the, um, proposed annexed, uh, roadway on one sixty-three. So because of that, uh, a, a different process will have to occur, uh, before the annexation is finalized. Uh, if the DOT, uh, uh, requests a voluntary annexation, the city will notify the county and also most likely the city of Beacon, since it's within the two-mile limit. And those entities will have to, uh, come together in what's called a consultation. At the consultation, the entities will discuss whether there should be any, uh, changes to the proposed annex territory. Uh, that is, is merely a recommendation, it's not binding, uh, upon the city council. Uh, after certain statutory notices are sent, uh, the city council, uh, can determine whether to approve or deny the voluntary annexation. Uh, if they approve the voluntary annexation, because it's in an urbanized district, it then has to be sent to the city development board in Des Moines. At the development board, uh, they will, uh, consider the application of annexation along with the, uh, voted and approved resolution, uh, by the county. So, for example, uh, if the county were to vote to disapprove of the voluntary annexation, it does not prevent the annexation in and of itself. It, uh, the county does not have the ability to, uh, single-handedly, uh, stop a voluntary annexation. Rather, uh, it is, um, a part of the file which the city development board considers when reviewing a voluntary annexation. Uh, unlike, uh, well, uh, at the city level, at the city council level, uh, there are no, uh, factors or standards necessarily, uh, that the, uh, city council has to consider on whether to approve or deny an annexation. However, when it gets to the city development board level, on the state level, uh, there are certain, um, statutory factors it must consider in approving the application, and there are certain factors that it must deny the application on if present. I mean, that's what, uh, three sixty-eight, chapter three sixty-eight talks about, we talk to the city development board. Um, ultimately, if they approve the annexation, uh, then that, that process is finalized. In this particular case, um, it's my understanding, uh, that only the roadway is being, um, discussed, uh, for the annexation. Uh, the, uh, the land that has been purchased, at least at this point, as far as my understanding, is not being considered, um, as far as the annexation, though that will probably happen at a later point. Uh, one of the restrictions a city has in annexing, uh, territory is that it cannot create an island, meaning that the territory has to be contiguous to each other. So just geographically speaking, um, uh, the city cannot directly annex the land that was purchased, uh, without any connecting land to the city itself. Because that would create an island, which statutorily they cannot do. So there has to be a connection, uh, uninterrupted connection between the boundary of, the current boundary of the city limits to Oskaloosa and the, uh, eventually the airport area. So the roadway is basically the, uh, link that allows further annexation of that area. You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
As far as the eighty-twenty is being concerned, uh, I think there might be a little bit of confusion between annexation and eminent domain, right? So, uh, the eighty-twenty rule for annexation is that as long as, uh, the, the territory to be, um, annexed, uh, eighty percent of the people in that proposed territory need to agree to the annexation, a voluntary annexation. The remaining twenty percent, uh, can be involuntary annexation. So that's eighty percent agreed, twenty percent do not. Now, in this particular case, at least in terms of the, uh, one sixty-three roadway, um, because it's all held by the Iowa DOT, uh, if they request a voluntary annexation, it would be a hundred percent of the area, right? So there would be no involuntary annexation as to the roadway. Now, if eventually the, uh, purchased land is annexed, then there potentially could be some involuntary annexation. But at this point, it's just a roadway. So that's the eighty-twenty that's being discussed. In terms of eminent domain, that's a little bit different situation, uh, where a project has enough, um, uh, of a land purchase or agreement, they can involuntary take the remaining part of the land, uh, in ownership of the land. So, one, we're talking about the boundaries of municipality and the jurisdiction of municipality. The other is actual ownership of land, which is a little bit different. So I think where the board is at this point, um, it is, there is no necessarily legal requirement, uh, for the board to issue a letter, uh, at this stage of the proceedings. Uh, but I believe the DOT wants, uh, to have some assurance where the county stands at least to the annexation to the, of the roadway, uh, before, you know, continuing down the, um, annexation process. Because again, it's gonna be, uh, e- even if the city council approves, which I imagine they would, the annexation is still gonna go to the development board, it's gonna be a lot of process that's still down the road. So I think the DOT just wants to kinda get an idea of where the county is at this point, because it's gonna be a lot of steps kinda going forward, you see?
Whether the county's gonna fight it or not.
Uh, yes, and, and again, the county unilaterally cannot stop annexation, right?
Right, right.
The only thing the county can do is lodge a formal objection through the passage of a resolution, which would then be considered, uh, by the city development board. But that doesn't mean it still will go through it. I'm not saying that, it's just, uh, it's considered as part of the file.
So have you ever seen like a highway used to annex before? I mean, does this set a precedence to what can come in the future?
Well, I mean, any, any landowner, including, uh, a, a state landowner, uh, can request a voluntary annexation. Um, I think in this particular case, uh, the, uh, it's a little bit unusual just to annex the right-of-way and not lands surrounding it. Uh, because typically, in an annexation, you're looking at provide substantial municipal services to the area being annexed, right? I mean, so it is somewhat, uh, unusual just to annex a road, uh, though, I mean, the city could provide, you know, plowing or whatever services for the roadway, you know, uh, that, you know, otherwise would be provided by another entity, right? So they, they would have some obligation to maintain the, the roadway that they're gonna annex. Uh, but I think ultimately, uh, it's, uh, it's a multi-stage process. Again, because the city can't create a island, so there's gonna have to be a connection. And unless they, you know, annex a two-mile swath of the county, the only way to connect it up is, or the easiest and most straightforward way to connect up, the, the airport land that's been purchased in the city of Oskaloosa is using the roadway as that link to avoid that.
And the DOT is allowed that.
Uh, and, and the DOT can request a voluntary annexation of what it has, yes.
So.
Can I, can, Andrew, can I ask you questions, sir?
Uh, well, it's under the board.
Yeah, fine with me, I mean, that's what we're here, I guess.
Um, so where we're at now, I just wanna make sure I understand this correctly. The, the board with the item that's on the agenda here can either support moving forward with an eighty-twenty annexation, and we're talking just the roadway, right? Uh, but the, the board has a choice whether they're going to support this moving forward and indicate that support, or oppose this moving forward and indicate the opposition. Am I understanding that correctly, sir?
Uh, i- i- it's my understanding that the DOT is requesting, um, clarification as to whether the county is supporting or not, or, or taking no position, I guess. Take a support, take no position, or, uh, resist that voluntary annexation. But because, again, uh, if that process starts, the county does have, um, a, a role in lodging objection, which, again, they can't unilaterally stop, but they can lodge objection to.
So there, so there is the op, you know, just moving forward is not the only option. The county, the board does have the option of expressing its opposition, correct? Uh, that's an option, correct?
Uh, that, that is an option.
Okay, that's, um, if I, if I may, um, it, I would, I would, I would suggest to the board, especially since there's an initiative, uh, and, and an initiative on the table with the city that directly relates to this stuff. Is there any way to just table this particular matter on, for, until that can be resolved? And also, the other thing I'd like to point out is we're missing one board supervisor. I think this is important stuff, and all three supervisors' votes should be recorded for this. You know, I think, uh, this is obviously contentious issue. There's other things in play that are prob, that are gonna get sorted out, uh, around five PM today, uh, at a special city council meeting. Um, that would, that would be my suggestion slash request to you two today. Is there any way we can put a pin in this and table it to a verdict?
I guess I don't. I know the DOT is gonna meet with the city council or city people tomorrow, or no Monday, excuse me. And that's why the meeting today, Friday, to have some sort of decision drawn up, so that they have that for Monday. So I'm not sure.
I guess I'm not aware of what's going on at the city tonight, but, uh.
No, I'm not sure.
I got another question for Andrew. If they annex that road, the city, do they own that road then?
Uh, no, they wouldn't necessarily own the, the road.
Okay.
Uh, but they would have to provide, uh, municipal services to that area. Um, just like, you know, let's say the city wanted to expand northward, like toward New Sharon, in that area hypothetically. Uh, if they did so annex, um, the, the landowners would still own title to the land, you know, that would change. It's just that now, the landowners would have to pay city taxes and, and, uh, on the opposite side of the table, the city would have to provide municipal services to that area. So in this case, the land would still be owned by the DOT, unless they were to sell it in a transaction.
Okay.
But the, um, city would now be obligated, uh, because it's part of the city, uh, city limits, to provide services to, to that area. So, you know, for example, hypothetically, if there was a car crash on that roadway, uh, then, you know, the city police would respond, because it's, it's in city limits.
Okay.
For example, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. I was just trying to figure out going forward where this starts and stops and what it looks like, I guess, so.
Yeah, annexation and eminent domain are, are really separate.
Right.
Um, uh, the two, they, they can be related if, you know, in a given project, but just because you annex something, doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna, uh, exercise eminent domain. However, you can't exercise eminent domain if you don't have that, uh, land under your control, uh, in the city limit, you see?
Yeah.
And that's why, for example, the city couldn't use eminent domain for the land that's purchased or the area around the land that's purchased now, because it's not within the boundary of their territory. You see what I'm saying? So you, you'd have to have annexation before eminent domain, uh, but you, uh, but the opposite isn't true. You can't just have eminent domain without annexation.
There's some, there's some question as far as how they connect, because, uh, the, uh, right-of-way's gotta touch the land that's being acquired.
Uh, y- y- yes, so there, again, uh, certain statutory requirements for annexation, and one of those is that you cannot create an island. Uh, I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying clear. It's gonna be denied all the way up and down if you're creating an island. So the only way, you have to connect in some manner, the airport area, assuming that's gonna be annexed, that airport area with the city. So it could be a, you know, a small sliver as a roadway provide, it could be the total swath, you know, a two-mile swath of, of country ground to get there, but in some manner, you have to connect those two pieces.
Man Hookland Farm is what connects it.
Uh, well, I think.
That's what connects it. For these guys that live out there, that's what connects it.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, whatever the area they have purchased and the area around it.
Yeah.
Uh, it has to connect with the, the city of Oskaloosa, so that roadway would provide the link in order to pursue a, uh, later annexation. And I would just highlight too, that there is a little bit different process, uh, depending on whether it's an urbanized district or not. Like I mentioned, this roadway, uh, because of the city of Beacon, it's within that amount of limits. That's why it's going to the city development board, right? Uh, but the airport itself, uh, if that was annexed at a later point and contiguous to the land they already have now, that would not go through the city development board, because that is a not an urbanized district.
Okay.
So that annexation, would, that ultimate decision for annexation would rest in the city council, but wouldn't have further review, uh, by a, a state agency. You see what I'm saying?
Correct.
So basically, this resolution that we're doing today just says, we're not for or against, we're ju, we're just neutral?
Well, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it's a pure policy decision by the board. I mean, uh, you, you can approve, take no position, or, uh, resist, uh, the annexation. Um, I mean, it's for the board to, you know, weigh the various public policy positions of, of any one of those options. Um, you know, it, if the, even if the board, uh, resists the, uh, annexation, uh, it still may go through anyways, like I said before.
Right.
Doesn't necessarily mean it won't happen. Um, you know, and I, there also could be costs, which I kind of think Chuck kinda mentioned in terms of, uh, relationships with other entities, DOT, Oskaloosa, whatever.
Right.
Uh, and I'm not taking position one way or the other, I'm just saying that there's.
No.
There's no, um, free lunch, so to speak. I mean, any option is going to have, uh, I don't wanna say drawbacks, but, um, potential ramifications beyond the roadway itself.
Yeah, Chuck mentioned the southeast connector, we've been trying for forty years to get.
Yeah, I just feel like I've had enough questions asked and, and confrontations with powers-to-be that we're not gonna stop it. And then we gotta look at, then look at the penalty that's gonna happen if we throw this nasty letter at the DOT that would indicate that the county's not willing to work with you, which is essentially what they've asked for. I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm willing to give up the gains for what looks like about ninety percent sure we ain't gonna accomplish what we want.
Uh, yeah, I think it's, it's very uncertain.
That's my, my thoughts.
Yeah, I would, I would say it's very uncertain, um, eh, how much effect the county res, or the county resisting the annexation would have at the end of the day, right?
Sounds like.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's not your decision.
No.
It's a decision of the city council and then to be reviewed by the city development.
The review of the board.
Yeah, and they're gonna have to meet certain statutory criteria in order to, uh, approve or deny. So, uh, again, that's just a weighing balance the board has to, to consider, you know, as it looks towards, you know, other projects or other relationships, you know, other, uh, ramifications, you know?
I mean, the concerns I had was, number one, landowners get properly, uh, financed, uh, compensated for the land. Number one, number two, two-twentieth street is a farm and market road, and that's somehow, that has to be dealt with out there. Then after that, I don't see that we got much leg to stand on to change the flow of this. As much as we'd like to think so.
Yeah, I, I would say, yeah, uh, you don't have the, hmm, well, even, even in the e- eminent domain situation. I mean, if it's within the boundaries of Oskaloosa, the area that's being considered, you couldn't go in and stop the city, for example, from exercising eminent domain over something in its territory.
Right.
In like manner, uh, uh, you know, the power of the county to have eminent domain, uh, the city can't control that. That's somewhat what the Supreme Court said, right? So, you know, annexation is a step in the process of, of eminent domain, if that's ultimately gonna happen.
Right, right.
So, at the end of the day, right, that's the, that's the purpose of all this, is this is the pathway for the city to get the eminent domain authority it needs to move forward with the project that's been rammed down our throats from, uh, from the jump. That's the only purpose of the annexation, is to pave the way for the city to be able to acquire the eminent domain authority on its own. I, it's like they think we're stupid. We're not, we see what's going on, and we have the opportunity to voice our opposition to this, you as our representatives. You as our representatives should reflect that. I understand Chuck what you're saying, I, I get it, I don't wanna lose those relationships either. But, we're, like you said a long time ago, Wanderers, we're tired of being owned. We've been owned by the city, now we're owned by the DOT, I hardly think so. The, the residents of Mahaask County need to be heard on this. You guys as our supervisors, it's your job to make that voice heard, and I hope you do that today.
But I really don't understand with what Andrew's telling me how I make my voice heard, because I'm gonna do it anyway.
Look, that's, that's irrelevant. We have the opportunity, you guys have the opportunity right here to say, yes, we agree with this, or no, we don't. And the answer to that question should be abundantly clear, no, we don't. And for the DOT to say, well, if you don't do this, we won't do this other good idea, that is words I'm not gonna use in this room.
Once, if they decide to annex the rest of the airport ground, Two Twentieth will be the city's, right?
Well, I guess I'm not privy to exactly what future plans could hold. I mean, as long as it's contiguous, meaning connecting to, let's say, assume the road is, is annexed, assuming that. They can then annex anything in that uncorporated area, including Two Hundred Twentieth, if they so chose. Now, that being said, I believe that there are plans to reroute that traffic. And again, I'm not privy to exactly how this is gonna look. But I, I do know that that is being considered, the impact on Two Hundred Twentieth, if the city does ultimately take control of that area. I know that's been an ongoing concern of, as far as rerouting farm traffic on one sixty-three. But also, it'd be up to the city, this wouldn't be the city's route at that point, yeah.
That's a concern I have with all this, is no future, you know, what the plans look like for Two Twentieth. Because that's been my biggest fight the whole time.
That question should have been, they should have had answered that question a long time ago.
Without documentation on a proposal for that, how could you vote to go along with it? You don't know what you're agreeing to if you agree here today with the road. You're just playing their game.
We, both of you guys were voted because we thought you wouldn't do that. That's the reason both of you are sitting there, is that every resident of the county thought that you would not do that. I would really hate for today to be the day you start proving us wrong.
Yeah, I don't, I've spent a lot of time last day and a half asking questions that I thought were pertinent to this.
You can always put a pin in it, you can always table it, guys. You don't have, you don't have to make a decision today.
What do you wanna do?
We could table it till Mark comes back, we'll have to have another meeting like Monday morning.
We can, I don't care, I guess, it's just.
So if they get that, the meeting with the, with the DOT on Monday afternoon.
I think long-term, it probably ain't gonna make a whole lot of difference.
Ain't gonna make any difference.
If you wanna do that, that's fine, we can table it, I guess.
So, we, we table it till Monday, but we'll set a meeting up for Monday morning.
See what works for Mark on Monday, so.
Yeah, it's, it's an, it's an important issue and probably needs to have all three of us.
Well, I just want everybody's quick, I just want everybody to understand what's going on. But I just don't wanna fight to be fighting if we can't make a difference.
And we're not willing to throw everything that we've gained with the DOT out the window.
I think that might require a separate conversation. I don't think that tactic is even remotely appropriate to say, if you don't go along with this, we're gonna annex the southeast connector.
You don't have any idea.
My biggest, this is my biggest problem with fighting it too much. I want Two Twentieth taken care of. I don't want gates on it, I don't want it to be a gated road where just farm equipment has to get out, open and shut the gates on both ends of it like they had in the plan. We give the city a plan to reroute, rework Two Thirty-Fifth when the new bypass comes in, so we have an overpass over it, so we don't have farm traffic even trying to cross one sixty-three. And if we start fighting them, we're gonna lose all that. And they're gonna win anyway. But we're gonna, we're gonna have a, a worse situation with farm traffic on one sixty-three.
Just for context for you guys, so that you know what's going on, there's currently an initiative before the city that would, if it, if it goes through, if it ends up on the ballot and the voters vote for it, it would affect the city's withdrawal from the twenty-eighty agreement, then all this annexation becomes unnecessary anyway. And so, that's what I mean, they're gonna try to repeal initiative and referendum, I don't believe they can do that retroactively. Correct me, Andrew, if I'm wrong. But I don't believe they can do that to an initiative that's already been submitted before they change the ordinance. So, that process is started, if the signatures are collected, it has to go to the ballot in November. And if the citizens of Oskaloosa vote in favor of that initiative, there is no twenty-eighty, there is no reason to annex anything. Also, the city will be required to solve its interest in any property related to the South Central Regional Airport. In which case, we don't even need to discuss the annexation. We can just go right to discussing our other transportation projects the way that it should have been all.
And that's on the city council meeting tonight.
So the, the initiative has been presented and accepted by the city. Tonight, the city is going to try and actually repeal the entirety of its initiative and referendum section from the city charter so that they don't have to follow through. I don't believe they can do that retroactively, I guess we'll find out. But that initiative is before the city, and if they follow the law, which I understand they haven't been inclined to in the past, but if they do, that will have to go to the voters in November.
So you guys are okay now. Part of the process here is we're trying to develop residential improvements out there in industrial park to defray from raising taxes in the future in the county.
Who's coming?
So there's a possibility, are you okay with raising taxes then, paying more taxes in the county?
Sure, sure.
Because we don't have the growth that we're trying to put in place.
I think we need a better plan for the growth. I, like, I've seen, I've, I've seen some, I've seen some of the plans and it looks all good, but I, nobody's been able to explain to me who's coming or who has the intent.
You probably need to run, run for office.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, you need to run for office. So that you're, so that you're sitting at the table, yeah.
Well, I did almost, and then you convinced me not to, Chuck, remember?
Did I, did I do that?
And then Chuck said, no, I'll do it. So I tried, and then you had folk on the phone.
You're kind of a young'un I am, you'll get your chance, you'll get your chance, Nick.
So if you wanna take a, take a step back and be sitting there, I'll be happy to.
So you wanna table this till Monday, till Mark can be here?
I think that's what we probably ought to do.
What is table till Monday?
Anybody put an announcement?
Motion second vote.
I make a motion we table till Monday.
Second it.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll table till Monday, so, that way we're all three here. Next thing on.
You can be here at eight-thirty on Monday? So we just, Terry, Terry can just make a notice right now.
It's fine.
Eight-thirty Monday morning.
Eight-thirty?
Mm-hmm.
So the public hearing was on this amendment, right?
Budget amendment, the budget amendments.
Oh, the budget, yeah, setting up some time for the budget.
Okay, so you want May twenty-second at nine? I make a motion we set a public hearing for May twenty-second at nine. Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Prove alcohol license for highway liquor and tobacco.
I think there's some questions we need to have asked before we can authorize that. So we'll table that till the next meeting also.
Yes, sir.
So the owner is on the line, if he wants to, I don't know if you wanna open up to him to explain what he's doing.
Okay, go ahead, that'll be fine.
Yes, sir, so I'm opening this store right in front of the motel. So there is a, like, an excess space area right at the front side of the motel. And I renovated already, like, from inside, it's not a big, like, but it's a small, kind of a C-store with tobacco and liquor and that.
So you're just wanting to open a small store in the front of your hotel out there by the pepper tree, the old pepper tree?
Yes, sir.
I still would like to table it till the next meeting, since we have one person missing. So, May fifteenth will be the next meeting, I think. At what time we can make a decision on it.
Okay, you want to research it a little more?
Yeah, we'll research it some more.
Okay. We're just gonna table it till May fifteenth.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more comment?
Thank you.
Yeah, any more comments? We always have public comments at the end too. If none, I make a motion we adjourn.
Second it.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.